In our corner, she is a phenomenal woman. She is somebody that I look up to. So can we just please give a round of applause, applause to Dr. First Lady Carmen Warren. And to Mother Warren over here, someone who will call you and let you know what time it is. She will tell you, um, you need to do this or you need to do that. But she always closes out with an "I love you" and a pat on your back. So to Mrs. Warren, I celebrate you today. But to all the other ladies in the house, um, you may not have given birth to a child, but we are all mothers. We all take care of our communities. We all nurture our communities and our families. So from my family to your family, may you have a blessed Mother's Day. May the Lord smile upon you and may he keep you safe, um, during the season of COVID. Thank you so much and thank you so much, Mayor Warren.
Adrian Wooten, Councilwoman at large, give it up. Our fire director, Ken Douglas, is here. Thank you, Ken Douglas, for coming through. Our school board member. Is that Sister Fatima Turner? Fatima Turner, come on up, come on up, come on up, come on up. A young lady ran on our school board most recently, was all over the city trying to make sure we have healing in our schools. I want to formally introduce, so everyone can see, the newest member of our school board in the City of Orange Township, Fatima Turner.
Good afternoon. I just wanted to come out because it's not just an honor, it's not just a privilege, but it was a duty, a responsibility for me to come out and say thank you to the women of Orange. You guys are not just mothers in a sense of giving children, but you are mothers not just of the black race, but you are mothers of humanity. And I just want to thank you and congratulate you for the riches that you've given to us, not just in the form of money, but in a form of values and traditions. That's the core of us as humans, as humans and for the human race. And I just say thank you, guys.
Thank you. Lastly, the vice president of Orange Township, a mother herself. Uh, she has three sons, two sons, but she thinks she has three with the mayor. But my mom is here, Tennessee, so you can't tell me what to do all the time. Ladies and gentlemen, Northway Councilwoman, Tennessee Easton.
Good afternoon, mothers. And to our first lady, I honor you because... I know who you're married to, but Happy Mother's Day. To Mother Warren, we share two adopted sons. Those are my two sons too, and I know why. You say Todd is your favorite. Where did the recta go? So, yeah, I have two sons. And, um, mothers, I just want to say Happy Mother's Day. And today, I put us up there with the essential workers because we've been essential workers all our lives once we had children. So that's nothing new for us because we took care of them, we raised them, and we work hard. Even when Dad wasn't around, we still did what we needed to do. They don't always act like we want them to act, Mayor Warren. They don't always do like we want them to do. But we love them anyway, unconditionally, just like Jesus loves us. So to everyone today, Happy Mother's Day. Enjoy, and on Mother's Day, enjoy your children. Enjoy the time that you have with them. Keep smiling, keep praying, because God has it all in control. And whatever it is you need, pray for your children. Pray for all of the children. And I pray for all the mothers, and congratulations to each of you. Whether you birthed a child or you didn't, I know you're the mother to somebody's child. I work at a high school, so I mother them all. And all of my son's friends still call me Mom because I mother everybody's child. I still tell them all what to do. And when they don't act right, I tell them that too. But anyway, God bless and may God continue to bless each and every one of you and enjoy Mother's Day. Thank you.
The Right Reverend Councilwoman, Tennessee Easton, let's give it up. It's important that we, that we celebrate, um, even in the midst of COVID. No matter what is happening, it's important that we celebrate because we have to pour into each other to make sure that we're always healthy, wealthy, and wise. So I want to thank everyone, um, that found it not robbery to come out and celebrate with us. We do have, Amanda, we do have some raffles, right? We will have some raffles that'll be coming up. I want to thank the staff for senior services. Amanda, where is she? Amanda, raise your hand. Where's Stephanie Cozy? Um, these people come to work day in, day out, even through COVID, and make things happen for us. Um, the tremendous job they did with the seniors. Um, what, what Stephanie did with the testing and the vaccines is just, uh, unmentionable. It's, it's really incredible what she's done and what she continues to do. So I want to thank her directly and personally for all the work that she does. So we're gonna have, we're gonna have a little bit of brunch, and then we're gonna come back with raffles. I'll have some of my friends address you as well. But always, as we close out, I know you guys want to hear the solo. I'll always love my mama. She's my baby girl. You only get one, you only get one, yeah. If y'all want to keep me going, just clap while I keep going. It's Mother's Day 2021, and we're here celebrating with the mothers of our community. Ladies, just look at the camera and just wave. Happy Mother's Day. Thank you, guys. Happy Mother's Day 2021. I'm here at the table with the ladies that rock.
That's right, we rock.
Special table here, Mother's Day 2021. Um, these ladies have mothered our community, and I just want to show my great appreciation and thank you, ladies, for all that you do. They came looking beautiful. They've mothered our community. They've been mothers to me. Thank you, ladies, for being here. Happy Mother's Day. This is Mom's Table. No, not that Mom, Mother of the Mayor's Table. Each year, she sponsors a table. Camera, make sure you're not looking at the glasses. Just the water. Happy Mother's Day to my mom. Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers in my life. Thank you. These ladies like to hear me sing, uh, but today it is my chance just to sing "Happy Mother's Day to you." That's me. That's me. Beauty, youth, and wisdom, that's what's here at this table. Happy Mother's Day, ladies. Say hello to the camera. Yeah, Jamila thinks she's the only mother at this table, but she is not. These ladies at this table have mothered me, have prayed for me, and have put their hands on me. And I want to extend my greatest wishes for Happy Mother's Day. Thank you, ladies. Yeah, that's the problem. That's the problem. How you doing? Yeah, these ladies say they're too young to be mothers, but they are nonetheless, they are actually grandmothers. I want to thank them for all that they do for our community. Yes, you do. Thank you. That's right, that's right. Hey, Mother's Day here. We're at Bellatalia Restaurant. We're having dinner in celebration of Mother's Day. Thank you, ladies, for all that you do. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, the hat may be expensive, and it may look like we're at the rich table, but we're just all here, mothers. Mothers who raise families and raise the community. Happy Mother's Day. Thank you, guys, for all that you do. Thank you. Yes, Happy Mother's Day to you, young lady. And Happy Mother's Day and Happy Birthday to our Queen Mother here. Um, she has come through 40 years and still looking good. Just want to say Happy Mother's Day. You're welcome. Yeah. Okay. I'm here with my brother, and we're here just to say Happy Mother's Day to the ladies. What do you got to say?
I want to support all the women here, and I hope and pray that everyone have a blessed Mother's Day.
Happy Mother's Day. You see Queen Mother here, right? Yes, she does it in grand fashion. Happy Mother's Day, baby. Are we here? Um, these ladies have been graceful to me at all times and in all seasons. Happy Mother's Day to both of you guys. Wave to the people and say Happy Mother's Day. Thank you. Happy Mother's Day. I am here with, with Mademoiselle, who has this beautiful hat on, and my sister mother here. Just want to say Happy Birthday to you. We're doing it in grand fashion. You know you're with your mother when she tells you when to stand up, when to sit down, what to do and how to do it. Um, these mothers have been guiding me for a long time. I want to thank them for being mothers to me and to the community. Happy Mother's Day, you guys. Thank you. Did you get her in there? Let's get it real quickly, though. Yeah, how long have you been a mother?
Oh, Lord, I must, I'd have been a mother, my son gone. So that was 52 years I was a mother.
52 years of motherhood, and she still looks like she's 40. God bless her. Yes, no, not in Paris, at the runway. But I am here with beautiful mothers. Want to wish you all Happy Mother's Day. Say wave to the people, say Happy Mother's Day. I am here with the fire director of the City of Orange Township. Um, you stopped everything to make sure you could say Happy Mother's Day today. Why is that?
Absolutely, Mother's Day is very important. We wouldn't be here without our mothers. So we got to pay homage to them because they're the ones who populate the world.
That's right.
Absolutely.
There you have it from our director. Director, thank you for all that you do, brother. Appreciate it. So I'm at the table where there are two mothers. Um, Adrian Wooten, you became a mother to a second generation as well. You like motherhood so much. Tell me what being a mother in our community is all about.
A mother in, in the community, um, in the City of Orange is a phenomenal thing. You have so many children that you can reach out to. But you're not only a mother to the people in your household, you're a mother to the kids out in the street. For example, I taught at Oakwood Avenue School, um, years ago. So those kids are in their twenties now. But when I see them, they're still hugging me, and they're still looking at me like they're little kids. I, they'll knock me down sometimes to hug me. So it's absolutely phenomenal. I love it.
You must have started teaching at 16.
I did. Actually, I was 14.
We have another mother who also crossed over and mothered other children. And now, Fatima Turner, you're on the school board, um, mothering 4,000 some odd children. Tell me about that experience.
Well, as our councilwoman said, it's important for us to not just mother the children that we birth, but to be a mother to the community. Uh, kinship relations is the backbone of our community. And so my doors and my arms, my heart, and my, the resources that I have are always going to be open and available to anyone who needs it, Mayor.
Spoken like a true community mother. We're here at Bellatalia Restaurant in the City of Orange Township, and we're celebrating Mother's Day. It's Mother's Day 2021. I am with one of my community mothers. Uh, we're celebrating. Tell me about motherhood, about the challenges, and about the successes that we've had.
For motherhood?
Yes.
Motherhood is wonderful. We're the mother of civilization. So it's God, it's, it's, it's a beautiful thing when you can, and when you're actually in charge of someone else's life and you hold it dear to you. I think it's wonderful. I love motherhood. I'm a great grandmother, and I asked God for a large family, and he blessed me with 12, 10 grandchildren and 3 great-grandchildren. It's the best thing that ever happened. Yes, yes. And can't leave the fathers out. Thank you for the fathers.
Thank you for the fathers. But today is Mother's Day, and we've heard blessings from, uh, mothers who had great families, who are in second and third generations. We want to thank everybody for coming out. Happy Mother's Day, City of Orange Township. Thank you. Mother and son, nothing more need be said. Mom, you raised him. He is a fantastic community servant. Um, tell me about your motivation in making sure that you raised him to be a leader in his community.
Well, I've always told him, if your old friends got new habit, get you some new friends.
Those are the golden words of motherhood. There you heard them from the mother of our fire director, City of Orange Township. Happy Mother's Day.
...